The time is now 5:31 and we want to be respectful of everyone's time this evening. And towards that end, we do have a forum of our board. And the first item we have is a public hearing, which will begin with a presentation by staff and an overview on the planning process for the Central Health Downtown Campus. And so is John in the room. Or he may be during an interview maybe. John, you're up.
I'm John Stevens, the Director of Financial Planning and Management for Central Health. And before we actually go into taking public input, I wanted to give a brief presentation on our reuse project to give the public some background on what we're about with this The first slide here shows the history and evolution of Brackenridge. It, in 1839, Edwin Waller, who was the first mayor of Austin, laid out a spot, a block, for the hospital that is part of the current Brackenridge campus, or Central Health Downtown Campus, as we're now calling it. In 1884, the city and the county jointly built a hospital on the property, which was named after Robert Brackenridge in 1929. And then in the 1970s, the city at that point began construction of the buildings that are still on the site now, primarily the main hospital tower and the parking garage and so on. Moving forward to the 1990s, the city was experiencing the turmoil that was going on in the hospital industry in Austin then, and entered into a long-term agreement with Seton to operate Brackenridge Hospital in 1995. In 2004, Central Health, upon its creation, inherited ownership of Brackenridge, and the lease to Seton inherited that from the city. In 2011, Senator Kirk Watson came out with his 10 and 10 initiative, one of which, or one point of which, was to build a new teaching hospital for Central Health to take care of its indigent population, again through a partnership with Seton. And then in 2012, we went to the voters for a tax ratification election that allowed us to increase our tax rate by five cents and to participate in the 1115 Medicaid waiver program that is funding some of the initiatives that we have underway. So here we are in 2014. We are beginning to anticipate that Seton in 2017 will vacate University Medical Center of Brackenridge and occupy the new teaching hospital, which will be across the street, across 15th Street from the current site. One of the things that we did early on was to work with the ad hoc committee that was established of the board members, and then bring to the Central Health Board of Managers some guiding principles for their consideration. We worked with board members and the ad hoc committee members, and we modified those somewhat and came up with what you see here, the three guiding principles that we have here. First and most important is always going to be our mission to advance Central Health's efforts to provide access to health care for those who need it most. The second guiding principle has to do with stewardship, and that means promoting uses and programs on the downtown campus that support the short and long-term fiscal stability of Central Health. One of the reasons that that is so important and has to be considered in conjunction with the first guiding principle, that of our mission, is because we are going to experience a reduction in rent revenue. We're currently receiving about $32 million a year annually from the lease of University Medical Center of Brackenridge to Seton, and we expect that revenue stream to go down, perhaps by as much as about $20 million. And so, one of the things that we certainly need to keep in mind in planning for the re-use, or redevelopment of the downtown campus is to try to retain as much of that revenue stream as we can. And then the last guiding principle is to strengthen and expand the relationships that we have with current and hopefully future health and wellness providers, to collaborate with the other entities that are promoting new programs in that same area, in the downtown area, and to help advance the goals of the larger community. So let's look for a moment at the site and talk about the opportunities and constraints that exist with the site. As you see there, the UMCB campus is 14 acres in total, and right now, it's all sort of built as a mega-block. It's all, there's no street grid that goes through the campus. Looking in a little more detail at the buildings that are on the site there, as you see, it may be hard to read the number there, but right now, there's about 800,000 square feet of building space on the campus. And the two parking garages that you see, the one up in the left-hand corner there is the main UMCB parking garage. It has about 1,600 spaces in it. And then the one that's in the lower right-hand corner is the parking garage that was built initially for the children's hospital and is now being used by the Clinical Education One of the other things that's, of course, going on in the area is UT's construction of its medical district and their master plan for having the medical school and the teaching hospital right there on the border of 15th Street. And so that is certainly going to be an exciting opportunity for us to be able to key off of what UT is doing on that side. Right now, UT is in the process of realigning Red River. UT is paying for the construction of that realignment, so that instead of going to the west of the Irwin Center, which is the, was the current alignment up until a couple of months ago when they closed it off, you can see now that at the top there, that straight arrow is going to go through what will be the medical, the UT medical district. And so that's a complete realignment of Red River to the north of 15th Street. Then when it gets to 15th, as you can see, it'll take a jog to the west there and then go straight down. One of the, one of the considerations that we have is, we think it would be in our best interest to try to complete that realignment of Red River, meaning to carry it south past 15th, which would go through the Central Health Downtown Campus, just as you see there. Interestingly, that is, that was the original alignment of Red River. It was changed, I believe, in the 1970s. And so what we would be doing is taking it back to the original alignment of Red River that was laid out, so that it runs all the way from, essentially from Cesar Chavez, straight One of the other things that's going on in the area is the Innovation Zone Task Force that Mayor Lefenwell created. This is a group of people that includes stakeholders from the Downtown Austin Alliance, from UT, from Seton, who are looking at trying to create an innovation zone similar to the one that's in Kendall Square in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and the one that's also in San Francisco by their medical district there. This innovation zone would be a place where there'd be collaboration between public and private entities to try to develop research and technology and things like that, bring those, key off of the medical school and the opportunities that it will present to One of the other things that's going on with the area is Project Connect, the urban rail that if the bond election for this is successful this fall, it will go along Trinity Street, as you see there, the red line along there. And of course, that would provide the opportunity for public transportation in that, in that area there where our campus is. And then lastly, the Waller Creek Project has been underway for some time now, and when that, when the tunnel finally opens and the inlet finally opens, that will create a lot of open space there, green space, that will enhance the attractiveness and the desirability of that entire area around there. This is kind of an outlet, outline of our public engagement plan. As we go through this process, and it's going to be a long process, again, Seton is not going to vacate UMCB until, currently scheduled now for January of 2017. So we'll be in the planning phase for a long time, and we want to work with our stakeholders, with our partners, our neighbors, and our collaborators. And so we are going to do that in a variety of ways, including project information that we'll have on our website, materials that we'll mail out, email updates and so on. We also want to, we've, we had an open house here in June, and this is the first public hearing that we're going to schedule. We'll follow up with one in the fall of 2014, and then we'll continue that if we need to do that. We'll also have team meetings, technical meetings in-house, meet with focus groups, and make presentations to our ad hoc board and to other citizens groups who might be interested in that, and work with, again, our stakeholders, the innovation zone, the central East Austin neighborhoods, and others as needed. Next steps are that our consultants right now are performing a detailed analysis of a reuse scenario and a redevelopment scenario. We are going to request from the city that the downtown campus be rezoned from P Public to CBD, Central Business District, which will sort of complete the zoning of CBD all the way up to 15th Street. Most of the other property around there is already zoned up to that. For example, the Brick Oven, which is right at the corner of 12th and Red River, is, is zoned CBD. And then, of course, as I said just a minute ago, we will continue our public engagement plan as we go through this process, this long process. So that concludes the prepared presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, or we can go to taking public input.
John, thank you for your comments. And as we all well know, this is something we as a board have been discussing and talking about since about March or so to get ramped up. And it was around that time we got the repurposing process started, including the engagement up against the group, which is working with us on this initiative. And almost a virtually identical presentation was presented in open session before the board about two months ago, and as you mentioned, at the June event, which was also the 10th Anniversary Celebration. And so we welcome at this early stage the public comments we're about to receive. With that in mind, any comments from my colleagues before we begin? Okay. And by the way, I want to recognize our colleague and a wonderful founder, if I can call it that, Park Hydrick, who chairs the University Medical Center of Brackenridge, repurposing the Innovation Zone Committee for Central Health, and has done a remarkable job working with not only John, but a lot of folks in terms of our staff in this room to get us thus far while also doing a lot of other work. So thank you for getting us to this point. And with that in mind, I'm going to ask Ms. Janay if she will give us a sense of our public commenters today.
Good evening, Central Health Board. My name is Janay Maganya, and I am a staff member here at Central Health. I'll be guiding us tonight through the public comment section of the program. Before I list off the names of the individuals that have signed up to speak, I would like to read the guidelines, just, we know we have some new individuals here this evening. For public comment guidelines, those who have signed up in advance for public comments will be called to the microphone in the order that they signed up. Others who choose to speak but have not yet signed up may do so after the signed-up speakers have completed their remarks. For the purpose of the public comments held during the course of the Board of Managers meeting, the board will follow the guidelines set below. One, public comment is taken regarding a specific agenda item. Two, any person may speak during the public comment portion of this meeting. Three, each speaker has a limit of three minutes. And four, each speaker may address the board only one time during the public comment portion of this meeting. Five, a speaker may not donate his or her three minutes or any part thereof to another speaker. Six, public comments will close once the last individual who wishes to speak has spoken. Seven, depending on the number of persons wishing to speak, the chairperson or presiding officer may, in his or her discretion, impose additional procedural guidelines on the time and/or manner of the speaker's presentation to ensure the efficient and effective conduct of the meeting. And finally, number eight, the board requests that all speakers be allowed to speak without interruption and that they may be given the courtesy of our full attention. At this time, I'm going to list through the names of those individuals that have signed up to speak. Again, if there's individuals after these people speak that would like to also make comments, they will be invited up. We have in order Patricia Moore, Ophelia Zapata, Julie Shastin, George Miller, and Laurie Graham. Patricia, if you want to come up.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak my mind about an issue that I found very important. Shortly after "South by Southwest," there was an article in the paper. Somebody wrote in and said, "We have all these drunks. Why don't we have a drunk tank? We've been asking for years to have a drunk tank." Now, I'm not suggesting that Brackenridge should be a drunk tank. We can name it something very sophisticated, such as Brackenridge Wellness Center. And in this new huge complex that you're going to be operating, we can actually have a wellness center that will deal with mental health, living healthy, fitness, all kinds of programs that we have in the county can all be brought together and put in one central location. Now, you'll probably have to talk to the sheriff about moving central booking into a central wellness center, so your candidates will be coming to you regularly. And at that point, you can say, "Well, this, this, this guy goes over here, but this guy should go up the hall, and this one should really go over here." But what I can envision is a real central Brackenridge Wellness Center that can address all the issues that we have here in Austin to deal with people.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for allowing me to speak my mind.
Thank you.
And up next, we have Ophelia Zapata.
Welcome.
Good evening, board members. I'm Ophelia Zapata, a member of San Jose Catholic Church and a leader with Austin Interface. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to give feedback on what we think would be useful. We did a tour in the spring, a couple of leaders in San Antonio regarding a Haven for Hope, which is also a facility somewhat of the things that this speaker before me just mentioned, an opportunity to bring all the resources together to help the people with mental illnesses. And as she mentioned, how there's a whole issue of the drinking and drunkenness and overcrowding of jails, and, but it's a place where people will be able to get assistance, not only short-term, but also may give them an opportunity to want to change their lives, to get them to the education, to the trainings, to even, you know, independent living. So it could be a Haven for Hope for Austin that is lacking right now. So that, that is something that we would like to see, that'd be an opportunity to explore. And there is one also in Houston. So there are places we can see how we could to, to our, to benefit the residents here in Travis County. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to continue on with our list, we have a couple people that have decided not to speak after all, but the next person and the final person that have signed up on the list that will be speaking is Larry Graham, if you want to come up.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Larry Graham, and I'm the board chair of the Downtown Austin Alliance. We are an organization of downtown property and business owners, and we manage the downtown public improvement district, and your downtown campus is within our boundaries. So we wanted to talk to you. We welcome the opportunity. We have a couple things we wanted to bring to your attention and to make requests of. The first is that you allocate right-of-way so that Red River Street can be realigned. I think John in his presentation talked about that. Auto and transit access to the emerging innovation zone and the rest of downtown is critical, and we would really like your help in eliminating this dog leg and kind of reconnecting the grid. So that's, that's an easy one. Along those lines, we ask you to incorporate good urban design principles as you reimagine the campus. If all partners cooperate, this area of world-class health care can also be a place of downtown vitality. Wide sidewalks, street, street trees, benches, retail, coffee shops, access to Waterloo Park, all help create a great place that will help, that people, where people will want to be. We urge you to avoid the single-use desert that your neighbors built in the Capitol Complex, just a few blocks north of the Capitol Building. By only building office space and parking garages, they ensure that this area would be devoid of street life and activity. We think that Gensler and McCann Adams Studio are great consultants who will give you excellent advice on the future of the downtown campus and ways to make it active and vital, and we certainly hope that you will listen to them. Our last request is that you pay particular attention to your mission of creating access to health care for those who need it most. Just a few blocks away from your campus, the Austin Resource Center for the Homeless, the Salvation Army, Caritas, and the Trinity Center provide services, but are, provide services to the homeless, but our community has not come together yet to provide real solutions to those most in need. We hope that Central Health plans will address this void, and we hope that you will participate in the planning that's going on now to help find solutions to this problem. The DA is excited for the possibilities of this area of downtown. The innovation zone that was mentioned earlier is a, is a great example of what we hope the Northeast quadrant of downtown will become. A good use, a good mix of uses might provide, might include private development to house companies that would contribute to a true innovation zone and a place that our whole community can be proud of. So with that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I actually have one more person that has signed up to speak, and following her, I will open it up to see if there's anybody else that wishes to make comments. And we have Cynthia Valladis.
Welcome. Hi. Good evening. Thank you all for allowing us to be here and providing input. One of the things that, that I would like to see happen first and foremost is if there be maybe a little town hall meeting for, not, not sparked by the article in the newspaper, and then the little meeting today to provide input, but rather a more, a more, a stronger public engagement process, so that the people who are not here, the people who are the most vulnerable, the people who don't read the newspaper, that don't have access to the computer, that aren't getting emails from Central Health can participate and give you their input as to what they would like to see happen. One of the reasons that we have an innovative, an innovation district and all the activity that's occurring downtown in the, in the corridor is because East Austin now is the most gentrified news neighborhood in the entire United States, 78702. There was nowhere for the growth to occur. So it couldn't go west, it couldn't go north to University area, it couldn't go south to the river in Travis Heights. So it went east where the minority community had been pushed to after they were kicked out of downtown. That's the history of Austin, Texas. And the reason they came here to East Austin was because this was a red line district that was created to house minorities and the poor population that served the people in West Austin. So we can't forget that, but we must be mindful of that. In our community, in the community that is the most vulnerable, we have huge gaps in the, in access to services that impact their lives and their quality of life. We have people who have behavioral problems, who have mental health problems. We have children that are special needs, who are no longer getting the services that they require because they've transitioned out of the public school system into the community and into an adult system that the state does not adequately provide for. If you're going into an adult DAB out of special education in the school districts here in Austin, the state does not have a requirement for how many care providers need to be there in place for the special needs adult community that is either 18, if they've already graduated, or 22, have reached the age of 22. You think about that. You can have a warehouse full of 150 special needs adults with all kinds of problems, medical, mental health, behavioral health issues, and you may have five care providers who are outside smoking a cigarette while the people are just sitting either in their wheelchairs, or they're sitting there waiting for somebody to challenge them, to engage them. Their quality of life is null. There are things that we have asked for at the Southeast Center that are not being considered and may not be included in Phase Two. We would like to see a huge respite center. We would like to see an adult community be able to be housed there with providers. We would like children who were pushed out of Shoal Creek because they have mental health, emotional issues, behavioral issues, and there are not enough beds.
Ms. Valladis, as you well know, you welcome your presence.
I thank you.
Your time has been, thank you for being here.
I appreciate that, but I just would like for you to understand where I'm going with this. That facility downtown could house all the providers and all of the adults and children in great need, the most vulnerable population we have in Travis County.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to those that have signed up. At this time, if there is anybody else that would like to provide public comment, if you'd like to come up, and I just remind folks that you have a three-minute limit. And if you can please state your name.
Hi, folks. My name is Ross Smith. I want to second the comments of the gentleman about straightening out the kink in Red River. As long as that stays there, there is going to be huge traffic jams for as long as anyone can foresee. And whenever people are stuck in that traffic, they're going to know exactly who to blame for. And they are going to be sitting there right next to your all's facility, getting mad at you. And every time you try and go and get money for bonds or get money, get funding for anything, the first thing they're going to say is, "When are you going to fix that kink in Red River?" And so you really should do it now, because if you wait till after something new has been built here and then decide that the anger level has gotten so high that you have to deal with it, the cost is going to be a whole lot higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comments? Okay, great. Thank you. This concludes our public comment section.
Thank you very much. And if there's someone who'd be kind enough to help us move the podium, I think they'll be all set. I believe we're giving them the simple communication so that the meeting is more meaningful. I gotcha. Thank you for that reminder. With that in mind, we have concluded the public hearing to discuss, to hear With that in mind, we have concluded the public hearing to discuss, to hear our other comments on the planning process for the Central Health downtown campus.
Now 10:24 and we are reconvening in the regular session of the Central Health Board of Managers July 16th, 2014 board meeting. We took no action in executive session and prior to going into executive session we announced that our next board meeting is August 6th, 2014 at 5:30 PM at Central Health Administrative Office here at 11:11. He says I charge this and with that I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm the chair. I'm reconvening.
Just a second. Any questions or comments and all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you all very much. Dale, thank you. Pramabeth, thank you.